I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Philip Board Meeting in July 28th. Just a reminder that if there's a emergency exit to the rear of the building, that's supposed to take you out of the building. Please go to your vehicles. Please do not leave the premises until somebody has set up a personnel. Also, it's a non-smoking building, so therefore if you must, you must go outside. A reminder, we only have one board meeting next month. It's the...
How often?
August 25th. There is no board meeting on the second Monday of the month. Only Monday.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Can I have approval, please, for the board meeting minutes of July 14, 2014?
I'm Juan Borja. It's on page two. I'll just pass it over. Several of us have been missed.
Motion to approve with the changes?
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
So, carry on. Trevor's up here.
Okay, the bills for the period total six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Top five bills: New York State Employee Help, one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-one cents; will be August payment; villagers skid more for various insurances, sixty thousand, three thirty-two seventeen; state insurance fund, fifty-seven thousand, nine seventy-five-ten for workers' comp; planning electric, forty thousand, eight twenty-five to install the emergency generators at Village Hall; and eastern resource recycling, twenty-seven thousand, nine seventy-two eighty for refuse and waste dumping. You can have approval, please.
Motion to accept the present. Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
And then just one approval for the general fund to run the capital projects fund, eighteen thousand, four hundred, ten thousand dollars and forty-seven cents; and the community development fund, eleven thousand, two sixty-eight, total of twenty-nine thousand, six seventy-nine thirty.
Motion to second.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay. Appearance. Right. Counselor. Are we going to do them in this order, or do we want to consolidate them?
The work of A and five A and B are essentially the same, Mr. Mayor. It's the lead agency designation and proposed negative declaration, all related to C, which is the request for the change of zone from E industrial, well, D two business, E industrial, and C residence, which is a mixed zone on this parcel to one D five district. So it is an upzone in a larger extent of E industrial, mix or change of C residence and D two. One, two, three, four parcels. So what I recommend is you call the public here and request the applicant to come up, have his presentation, and then we can make the lead agency and environmental determination.
So I read the notice into the record. Notice hereby given to the Village of Patchell, public hearing before the board of trustees, please take notice that the board of trustees of the Village of Patchell pursuant to chapter four thirty-five, section sixty-nine of Village Code of the Village of Patchell shall consider a change of zone from E two business, E industrial, C residence, to D five district for properties located at 114, 120, 128, and 132 River Avenue, Patchell, New York. Owner of the subject parcels is Pine Lake Properties LLC. The Village Code requires that all property owners within a radius of two hundred feet be notified of this proposed request. If you require any information prior to the scheduled meeting date, please appear a person at Village Hall. Or a person interested in proposed application for a change of zone will be given an opportunity to be heard on Monday, July 28, 2014, at six p.m. at Village Hall, 14 Baker Street, Patchell, New York.
One of the things that we require is that any zone change like this, we would buy the planning board as in our code that way. And the planning board didn't, we wouldn't do it. I'm going to ask the board of trustees, please read into the record.
Here, Mayor and board trustees, the applicants for Pine Lake Properties, 114, 120, 128, 132, River Avenue came before our board and presented a plan to demolish some existing structures and construct a self-storage facility on the aforementioned parcels. Several work sessions at the public hearing were also held to receive comment. Through the entire process, the applicant was very responsive to our request and was very willing to take into account our requests for approving the proposed site plan. Further adjustments to the plan will only be considered when a change of zone or special permit is granted by the village board. Overall, the planning board is in favor of this use as historically, storage facilities like the one proposed have very little environmental impact on the property and the surrounding neighborhood. The River Avenue corridor presents a challenge to planning as it is a cornucopia of zoning districts spanning the continuum from A residence to E industrial. Over the last several years, many as-of-right uses for these parcels have been proposed, which have been particularly concerned due to the proximity of the property to the River Avenue Elementary School. The school, the businesses, as well as the many multifamily residents south of the railroad tracks on River Avenue create a large volume of traffic on the street, and all of the proposed projects in the past would have only served to exacerbate the traffic issue. Recently, there's been an effort to rehabilitate many of the homes on the block and finding a use to fit the requirements of the zone while preserving the progression made on River Avenue, all while holding down traffic has been very difficult. We believe this project fulfills this requirement. Architecturally, these buildings are designed and placed to minimize the commercial impact of the property. Landscape proposed will buffer the project from the street, and the rehabilitation and preservation of the facility homestead will enhance the project while providing transitional element to the project, a residential bridge to the rest of the homes which dot the west side of River Avenue. Security and cyber land to the project as well as an added element of safety to the residents who live on the block, as well as the children who walk to and from school each day. Most of all, the residents who spoke at the public hearing were in favor of the project, and some had legitimate concerns, which have been noted and will be addressed in any final site planning review. Planning board will need to do a more extensive review of the plan if the village board approves the rezoning. However, we currently are favorable at this junction towards the project. Respectfully submitted, John Irocco, Chairman, Patchell Village Planning Board.
This is primarily an upzone from where it is now on E industrial. E industrial allows most any kind of uses, a benzene factory, storage of trucks, to any sort of industrial use. So by looking at this, and if the upzone goes through, it really will calm the neighborhood down. Also, it is consistent with what we're doing with the change of zone on the remainder of River Avenue to from D two to C residential, which again will settle, make solid that whole area through there. So I'd like the man who was asked, you sell, profit uses, thank your presentation to us.
And just one of the knowledge from the record, we need four thirty-five seventy-two notices that were sent out and returned receipts were handed by the applicant. Thank you.
Before the record, Ralph Fiorello, manager of Pine Lake Properties. A little history about the property that was mentioned by the planning board's note. Due to the multi-zoned things there, gives us some as-of-right uses that we've talked about probably for the last ten years. One of them that we came up with, and just so you know that I'm not kidding you, was a strip center that by right, we can put in there, it was the first 150. And then we were talking about through the years, maybe some housing for either Broward Cliff or the hospital, some form of housing, bring the sewer over and do that there. This is the old homestead of our family, so we're trying to do what's right by the village and do something with the property better than it is now.
My dad worked for me, so they used to park the oil trucks on the property.
It was the old oil office.
From fifty odd years ago, so it had some use for industrial uses.
And the corner piece also had trucks on it, and on the other side of the railroad tracks had trucks on it. Matter of fact, there was an oil terminal, there were tanks in the back, just right south of the railroad tracks. So one thing that came back as a benign use was self-storage, and after talking about it extensively with the village and people, it just seemed like a way to go. So we came up with some preliminary designs, keeping the house there, even though financially a little bit, it'd probably be better to knock it down and sort of keep everything generic, but keeping the house there, we understand this way, when you make the turn-off division, the first thing they're looking at is the house, and due to the topography of the land, everything sort of slopes, it's about ten feet or twelve feet from River Avenue to the back of the property, on the top of the property, so you can sort of nestle some things in the back there, all lighting and everything would be low level. So initial designs, right now, this is a preliminary layout that was done by one of the manufacturers that seems to make sense that we're going to slowly go and develop if this goes through with planning, is to sort of have the perimeter in buildings, have trees, we have an emergency exit on Morrison Place. We purposely kept the buffering as you're pulling in and out, to be very conscious of people walking on sidewalks, if there was any issues, make sure there's plenty of line of sight. The good thing is, as we all know, and I got some, I have some statistics here, self-storage facilities do not generate a lot of traffic. Generally, people are visiting them once a month. Now and then you'll have, once, you know, once a week, depending on what's going on, or every six months, because once it's in there, they're in there.
Out of sight, out of view.
Basically. And think there's a need for it in the village with the apartments and people downsizing, and you think there's going to be a need for it, that'll be a successful plan. Other than the one on Waverly Avenue right now, I believe you have to go out to Bayport or up on Sunrise. We're trying to keep this just tight, a nice little storage facility, you'll have security, you'll have gates. The idea with the house is to have a manager in there, and then upstairs there, maybe even make a manager's apartment, so someone will be on premises for security there. It's not going to be a twenty-four-hour operation, as of now, we don't have that, that didn't have. And that's it.
Do you plan on having trucks or trailers, or anything, or just split the storage?
As of now, no. I mean, with any business plan, that, as we're going through the preliminary plans here, and you talk to more and more people, what's going on, you do see someone now and then set up a U-Haul or something like that going out of there. As of now, the initial business plan is no. And even at that, though, when I went to all these facilities, it's basically, they have them there for convenience. They're renting out a truck, people do it themselves, that's why they go into storage facilities. Rent a truck, go to their house, load it up, bring it back. It's a one-day thing, and then they leave it, they're in their cars.
Any comments, questions, but no?
Are we following in order, the public hearings? Are we going to go one by one, by one?
Well, let's, any questions for Mr. Fiorello?
I can handle on the third public hearing if we're going to go, if we're going to do it that way.
Well, what do you mean the third public hearing?
Do you have, are there three public hearings here, A, B, and C?
No, they're all together. Lead agency designate board, the lead agency for the change of zone, the proposed negative declaration for secret, and then the proposed plan.
So then we're ready for public?
Oh, yeah. We'll do all three of them at the same time.
Okay. At this point?
Yep.
Okay. John Bojek, Maxenceki. Well, I'd like to take this one by one, starting with the designation by the board of trustees of the lead agency. Maybe you could just clarify what responsibilities the board takes on when it assumes that responsibility, what it is supposed to do when it takes that designation for itself.
Well, chapter six one seven, the NYCRRs, about this, it covers, you know, what the responsibilities are environmentally. DC even produces what's called, they call their secret cookbook on what the responsibilities are. But generally, it is to review what the exact segmented responsibility is before you today. It's not the site plan, it's only the change of zone. So that's critical for the analysis of what's going on here. This is already a developed site with zoning designations, so it's very, very narrow to change from one zoning designation to another. And you, what the board does is it analyzes the short environmental form, which is called the appendix B, six one seven point two zero, filled out by the applicant, and reviews those topics, and the board has them, and they do it.
Okay, now, okay, fine, that answered my first question. The second question, that's the short environmental form, correct? Right. Which you folks have against the public, though. This is, they just, this is, they just need to respond, because I can't, I've never seen it before. Here, John.
Take mine, John.
Right. Thanks. Well, what's difficult for me now is I really can't give this a fair assessment, just to cut this off. I wish it had been included in the back. I think it would have been fair for the public to be able to have a chance to review this, if I don't. So I'll go with the third point. I spoke at the planning board in favor of this project, I think, I listened to what was expressed about it, I know about the alternate uses that it might have come to be, and it hadn't, and this was used to be a lower impact one. But also, I did express two reservations. Now, whether these are relevant to this, I'm not exactly sure, maybe these are conditions that could be added by the board when it reaches its final approval, we'll see. But my two concerns are these. One is the traffic issue. When Mr. Fiorello spoke about this before, I did point out to the board that he has made a representation about the traffic at a very critical part of the village, that would be the last meeting, there's a person bringing up the issues about the traffic at this particular site. Mr. Fiorello, of good faith, I'm sure, has made a representation about the traffic flow, but again, it's a self-interest of representation. There is a need for independent one about the traffic issues at this site, and one done in the summer, if that's possible, and not in the winter. So that'd be my first request. If you go along with this proposal, which I somehow sense that you're probably going to, would that condition be ordered as part of your approval, if that's possible? And my second one is what I expressed the last time I was here, too, is the destruction of the tree zones property. Now, it's less than two acres, it's 1.5 acres, I checked that out on Zillow.com, so we have no Brookhaven laws to protect this, we're back to where we were before, which is the village itself, maybe it's, maybe the horse is out of the barn on this, maybe it's too far along the line to save the trees of the bear. This has come up before, and I think, Lori, and really, you're the tree advocate, I think we need a tree law, and this, again, brings it back to the fore.
Before you were involved with the Tree Committee, we had, in the early days, we had numerous meetings, and we reviewed a lot of the legislation that other communities have that preserve trees, and we really found that in many cases, they, we felt that they would have unintended consequences, and anecdotal stories that I had heard from people living in this community, sometimes they were very onerous and burdensome, and maybe it would be more to take things on a case-by-case basis. So that was, in fact, Josephine, you might have even been on those early, early meetings with Aaron Herb and a number of other people. So we never did adopt any legislation like that. But what I could say on a case-by-case basis, if you bring it up to the planning board, in some cases, we work with developers where they can work around existing trees, or where they can, within the site plan, plant trees to make up for the loss of trees somewhere else at the site, depending on what, what work. When you see it at Copper Beach Village, there's a number of trees that were left in River, Riverwalk, and the same thing, several locations, but sometimes it's just not feasible in the site. So that's, those are the discussions that we've had.
Okay, so in this case?
I think that in this case, you'd have to bring it to planning board, I don't know how Ralph feels about his site plan and the trees, but I don't, I know you can ask Brian, I don't know if this is the venue to discuss that.
Yeah, both of those two topics, I would say, we'll go to the planning board. Because again, this is, it's almost, it's property specific, and a lot of times zoning gets changed, and I criticize other municipalities that do it, because there's a reason why zoning is changing, there's a reason, or there should be, a plan is to why it's going that way. A lot of municipalities do it in a vacuum, with the legal fiction, not really knowing what's happening, like why they're doing it. Of course, everyone knows why they're making a change, but a lot of municipalities proceed with a change of zone as the law requires them to, a general change, according to the country. Has a plan or something along those lines. And in this case, the context of the plan, because this is so site-specific, while we're not ruling on the, on the plan tonight, we are ruling on what the change of zone should be.
It would be very disingenuous for us to do this zoning change without having the applicant come in and make a presentation, to be able to say, yeah, this is being done with this kind of plan in mind, you know, because we could have actually have done this in a box and said, we don't know, no, we could have, but that doesn't, it's never made sense to me, I think it is about the transparency that you're talking about all the time. What is the proposed plan that we're looking for on the block, and where is it going? It's the same thing as, you know, the change from D two to C residence, in the remainder of the block. It's looking at that block, saying, and that block right now is primarily multifamily system. So let's make it what it is, and so that the rest of those homes alone there can be taken care of, and we can start going after, after the buildings, upgrade that whole area, because it is one of those last areas that hasn't been touched. I understand where you're coming from. I, like I said, I testified for the planning board in favor of the proposal in general, but you know, there are unintended consequences, and those are the ones we need to touch out for, because I saw you, Mr. Mayor, only a couple of days ago, trying to negotiate that, that spot when there was a fire department, as it runs down River Avenue. I saw you in your car. It was difficult for you, and it's difficult for people lots of times, so it's a fact that needs to really be given a lot of care. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your honesty. Any other comments for the board? Jackie, you live there, still with these slots?
Yes, I was saying, I do live behind a storage facility, and it's, most of the time, traffic is, it's nonexistent, and it's, I live, it's behind me, plus there's Ninth Street, which, which comes from Waverly to Central, so a lot of those people actually use Central Avenue before or after, and it's, you really can't tell there's any, any traffic more than what would be normal. I find that most of the use is probably in the evening, weekends, but it used to be a auto parts distribution center, which was a twenty-four-hour operation, so it really, you know, took the traffic away, and, you know, I've never experienced any kind of traffic problems at all, no problems really, you know, a few little issues at one time at the storage situation, but, you know.
A lot of people have a question, Ralph. This plan eliminates that house next to the homestead house?
Yes. And, I mean, one of the things, and hopefully, when we were talking with the planning board, they're very concerned about the aesthetics, and that's why even, how are we going to do the tree lines, how are we going to do things? Yeah, we probably have to take out, down some trees on the property, but the overall look from the road is going to be much neater and cleaner, because it's almost going to look like an estate, and you still have to see them, it's part of the deal, but we're going to be very conscious of the landscape design here, because we want to fit the village's motif.
Ralph, I'm assuming these are one-story then, so they're not going to be visible front of the road?
There's a certain amount of visibility, we're going through the planning with the, you know, on the layout and doors, and we were talking with that, but as of now, just because the way it goes, until someone makes the argument, and as we get more and more in development, that two stories are even worth it, because you have to get elevators, you're talking different sets of codes, you're different, different building, or as of now, it's all going to be single-story perimeter out, going off the way out that we gave.
How many total units, Ralph?
The unit, we're looking at thirty-three thousand rentable feet, the unit mix can vary because the way they design buildings now, which I just got educated to, you actually can move the interior wall, so you can start off with, say, a ten by, you can have a ten by thirty and a ten by ten behind it, or you can make it to ten by fifteens, which you can move that wall in and create some extra, extra space. But we're looking around thirty-three, thirty-four thousand rentable space, so that's a couple hundred units, because I was primarily doing some larger units to take into account. We're looking for the people that are moving out of their house, going into the apartment, and they need a ten by twenty, and when you call around and do your feasibility studies, they tend to be the ones that go, rent the longest and rent the fastest.
Any other questions? Follow. They had one hand or something.
Go in order. Make a resolution for A, we're going to make a resolution for B, and then make a resolution for C.
Question approved, yes, we need the board trustees of the lead agency, for some of the secret, for Pine Lake Properties LLC's change of zone application. Your motion?
Motion.
Second.
Aye.
Of course, approval to adopt a negative declaration pursuant to secret, for the project, for Pine Lake Properties LLC. Motion.
Second.
Okay. I got it, it's okay. Pine Lake Properties LLC, of course, change of zone from E two business, E industrial, C residence, D five district, property located at 114, 120, 128, 132, River Avenue. Motion.
Motion. Second. Aye.
Ralph, you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
And take your things out.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes. Ralph, you know, thank you. Please come to 2015, 2015, Patchell, 11,000, we said, uh, we just have refugees, thirty seven, River Avenue, there's a property, like, the three family, going to a two-family one. Motion. Second.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Mayor, Village Trustees, Mr. Steele, Attorney Egan, Dennis Smith, with, I would say, a brief BID report, and we're going to start off with the, with the New York High Street grants. With the good weather, we're making good progress on moving forward with these. As I've said before, there's three projects that are complete, those being Goldberg, Sledge Adian Cell, and Many Health, they're either, have been reimbursed already, or in the process of being reimbursed. At sixty-six Seventy-Four East Main, which is Rose Jewellers and David Shoe Emporium, deconstruction is complete.
That looks great, fantastic. The signs are.
The signs just made. I mean, it's such a drastic improvement as to what was there, it's incredible.
It's huge.
And I'm very, very pleased with that. We've done the final inspections, I'm just waiting for the invoices and the canceled checks, and once we get that, and put that into the report, and we'll mark that one off the ledger as well. Seventy-eight East Main, which is another project next to the post office, it's Mayor Ross and Hagan, the law office, it's coming out really nice, they put new windows in there, they redone, redone the shapes on the building, just about complete. I should be able to make the final inspection on that within the next week, ten days, and then we'll look for the paperwork from that project, and we'll submit that for reimbursement as well. Forty-six East Main, which is the former yesterday years, I am hoping for construction to start this week. I spoke with Susan, as well as Bobby Fonkel, who's going to be the contractor on the job, and Bobby was tied up for the last couple of weeks, but hopefully he's going to free himself up this week. It's not a big project, it can be out of the way in somewhere between three to five weeks. It's almost a punch loss to make the building look a lot better on three sides than what it does now. Those three sides, plus the front, the row walkway, and the, the back quarter. Those three sides, plus the front, the row walkway, and the back courtyard that faces the alive art.
Is part of that taken care of, the lighting? We have the goose neck lighting.
You have the lighting that goes up the?
It's on the building, and there's been a problem with the electric all these years.
Well, the question is, we can take care of that. Is that DPW? Was it? Whose light is it?
Well, that's cool, we've never been able to figure out.
It's been so long, I, you know.
It's been not working as long as I'm interested.
I'd like to see it secured. If you could redo those, if we need to contribute something for that.
Well, let me ask you two questions. What would you like? I think you kind of just answered that. And the second question would be, do we need it now that we have the lighting?
You know, when you're walking. I, I'm more like the better way. You know, it's always my theory on lighting, if you have the opportunity, you should keep the opportunity with as much as you can.
Then we will make part of the project to keep the lighting and make sure that it works. And we'll just build that into what it is that we're doing. So, you know, I hear you. I mean, if the walkway looks great, the more light, the better. So, you know, I'm over with Susan and Bobby, and that will be the point.
If it's a issue talking, we do not talk about it.
Okay, okay. But that'll be the, you know, that'll be what we look to do. 27 East Main, which is Blums. We've gotten all the paperwork in. We're going to redo the front of that. It's going to be opened up. It's going to be new glasswork, new door, new sign. Okay.
I know, I told my old boss.
It's going to be a new sign and the old sign. It's going to go to the back door?
Yeah, going to go on the roof.
It's going to go to the back.
Going to go on the roof. But that's another project that's very exciting. I'm looking forward to it. And we're looking to start that by the middle of August, somewhere between the 11th and the 15th. 124 to 128, which is the old Olive Garden and La Isla. We're going to do a facade makeover on that building. And the start date for that is the firm orders the floor. I mean, all the pieces are in place, the paperwork has been done, the contractor has said, all the approvals that needed to be gotten are gotten, and we're good to go. So that was 11th and 14th. 10 South Ocean Avenue is a small project, it's basically the windows. It's still under development. If we do go forward with that, it's, it'll take the better part of a week to get it done. So I'm not too worried about that.
What is that?
That is Joe from his building, on the four corners. And this project was to take the part of the grand old windows that used to have this oval half moon on top that was somehow boarded over years gone by, and put the glass back in there and make it look like it did when the building was there.
On the second floor?
On the second floor. Correct. And those windows front South Ocean Avenue, as well as West Main Street. Again, I think aesthetically, it means a lot, but it's not a big project. If Joe moves on, we can get it done in a week or two. The one disappointment is 208 to 212 East Main, finest fitness. I talked to Steve today, and I said, look, we're either going to go on this, or I'm taking the money back. So I'm taking the money back. He's not prepared to go with it. Was Joe, will see how long the building is, not looking to do anything with it. So unfortunately, I've got another $12,500 that I thought I had earmarked, that I'm going to look the shop around real quickly, so that we can, uh...
And it doesn't cost $12,000.
Is it in this, wrong in this area?
Well, it would be in the area where you just have the side walls and the landscaping.
But it can't be streetscape, because that's where...
It can't be streetscape.
It's got to be per cent water, it's got to be a project rehab.
I wanted to add some sort of, that type of railing that I know you're going to put around the beds.
We put it.
Oh, you did?
It's in the street.
Why don't we walk by there? Last, I think last Monday, I was down there.
It was put in, I believe, on Thursday.
So I was wondering, we could get something similar around the tree beds that are close to the street to keep people from walking.
Let me say this, though. If I can't get another project, then I can solicit openly, and see if they make an exception. But I did have most of your original projects, so I don't know.
What does that cost? What did it cost to do one bed?
$7,950.
Those two beds were $7,900.
For the, just for the metal?
For the metal, just the gateway. It cost about $120.
Or ask the state, if you can. Can we, trees I could put in, $7,900?
You can't do streetscape.
What about lighting? Streetlight, on the other side of the street. That's a small.
But you know what? It would still come on the streetscape. So I had to solicit openly for the monies to do that. And, you know, that would case, yeah. But, but I don't know, the $12,500, I guess, we'd get.
Three. Three, four, five.
But we're great at that sort of, and I'm sure collectively, we can all get together and figure out, you know, some ideas as to how to try and spend that. You, but it's...
The post office is talking to a power washer. I went in there about a week ago, 10 days ago, getting a contractor. When they're going to do, you know, it's going to...
Trustee Ferb, did you speak to the post office or?
I spoke to someone who wouldn't let me speak to the post office. The post office was talking to the contractor. And he was the, you know, manager.
That'd be great, if that happens. I mean, that's the one piece of everything that we do, and it's not done. If you get that, it's an iconic building, if you get to look in the way, look, you know, some years back, would be great. Would be great. Right, so we have that 12,500, then we have the shop. And the streetscape, which we kind of talked about in conjunction with the sidewalk project, is almost complete. We've pretty much got the plant, the plant is in there. We need to bring it up a little bit, though. We have to get a few scrubs in there that are a little bit higher. You know, once you put the 18-inch fence around it, and then there's going to be benches on either side, you're going to kind of lose what's in there. So we're going to bring it up a little bit. The benches and the, I think there's two, three trash receptacles that are going to be ordered to go along with that. When that project is done, it will, I mean, it'll look straight down, with the light poles and the sidewalks and the planters, the fencing, it's a world of difference from what it was several months back. So this will just be the finishing touches on that. And I'm happy to announce that I talked to Dave Tiff today, and I just passed him as I was coming here tonight. The hanging baskets are on those poles, so we are complete with that as well.
Dennis, I have a, I guess, a request. I assume those benches are going to be, the other ones that go up strong?
They're going to be prototypes of the ones that...
We spend a little bit of extra money and put the village steel on those benches. You could.
Let me say this. I've got 18, that project is running 18,775 right now. So we've gotten a little bit back, because we didn't plant it as heavily as we thought we would. So if the money is there, yes. If not, I'll solicit the bid board and we'll...
We can do that, we can do that, whatever.
Because, we'll get it done, I'm just not sure.
The matches that are not dedicated to someone, we could put the bill soon. It'll cost some money, you know, it'll cost a couple hundred bucks, but I think it would be a real nice touch.
We can get that done. We just have to figure out how we're going to fund it. So that pretty much, you know, wraps up or talks about the streetscape portion of the grant. The lesson I just want to talk about is the security camera initiative. I met with Steve Rose and Adam Daley from Ableton Technologies last Tuesday. Those are the gentlemen that are affiliated with the camera security center, second truck that we had there last month, which was really quite awesome. I mean, what they can do with that, and the way those cameras perform, is unbelievable. But they're putting together a plan, in quote, for our security camera initiative. And this will be the third assessment that I have gotten. And with that, hopefully, the bid board will be able to render a decision ahead of receipt by August 10th. And again, we're looking to incorporate the Eastern Theater, Passive Library, and then Joe's buildings on that building on the four corners. Get some, you know, we get a view of Eastern, West Main Street, South Ocean Avenue, as well as parking lots and hopefully church, and maybe... Unless there's any questions for me, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, just before David comes up. Thank you. Before David comes up, just, the other weekend, before we had this festival, the July 5th. We started out on Wednesday night, they had the gateway. They had Mary Poppins, they had it all three nights. And when you get to put the numbers together, you probably have between 30 and 35,000 people wandering through the village during those five days. And it really is a testament to the way the chamber put together, the July 5th, the five, managed that part of it. But, now, we'll get back to the guys, the work you guys have done over those five days, the amount of hours put in, and then you kind of roll into that, and you roll into DPW, Public Works. Guys would be at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning, all the days that are the festival. The neighbors as far, even outside the village, over on Grove Avenue, up in South, you can show everybody, the neighbors are clean, for the residents of the community. Making sure that garbage was picked up. Parks, when you look at them now, yeah, the crease is a little flattened out, it's brown. But what Joe Dean and his crews and his people did just really incredible. And then we had the recreation department, with Billy, Commissioner Hilton, who ran the regisstisia, who worked at that department over those five days. And especially over the period of time with the festival, it's a tremendous, tremendous impact. And it really is a testament to the staff, the community. I came in here on Monday morning, a little bit earlier, because I knew Patty was not going to be here, just figuring that if you really know, we're crazy with people's complaints and things like that. We ended up with one complaint for the whole thing, and it was a gentleman from up on the North Shore who came down and had bought a $70 ticket for all access VIP tickets. And he was handicapped, and all the handicaps basically were taken. And all he wanted to do was get a hold of Jim Faith, to try to get his $70 back, because he couldn't come in. And so that really is a testament to the staff and the hard work of the people there. And the business community, and how they react, and how they put things together. And the residents within that area, and how they were threatened in the middle of the vortex of that whole thing. And...
People couldn't be nicer.
So, you know, I get it out of my stomach, you know, the hour before Live After Five starts, until the hour end, it's over. Get it out of my stomach, sometime probably goes there, you know, till sometime Monday morning, kind of waiting. You know, there's an expectation, and I really am proud of the people within this community. Really is an amazing thing, when you take a look at it, the impact, and how smoothly these people went. And, you know, thinking some kind of pity also, but I know, you guys work pretty closely with me all that. And there's a cooperation.
Yeah, we work well together.
Yeah.
Yeah, we work well together, yeah. It worked out good.
It really, really did. And, you know, we have some, after some election, and we've got to, it really, sort of kind of, not amazed me. Yeah, that many people could come to this community and really speak well about things that were done. David?
I can just make my comment as you're coming up, David. I think it's testament to the South End residents, because Bill, I sent a letter earlier, and, you know, in the beginning, it was, we worked through, and they're all having parties now. They're all inviting, you know, all their friends to sit in their yards and up on their rooftops. So they're embracing that this is... Two people were selling water out on the... Yeah, Monday and stands, and so...
Everybody stands all over the place.
Well, there's one way to do this, you have rags clothes out.
Yeah, that's right, one had all my clothing there.
Lots of people left in front of the parking lot, you know, the grass patch in front of the parking lot, of course, the festival. Including some of my friends. Not fair.
We have a Live After Five this weekend.
Yeah, well, good evening, first, everybody, and I'm glad to be here. And, yeah, I want to continue on the theme, actually, of you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Live After Five was a huge success. It really, I mean, the crowd did increase in numbers than last year's Thursday. It was no doubt, it was a larger crowd than we had last year, but no problems. Definitely an increasing families. I think the increased family section made a huge difference. I think the artist element certainly added a different element to the whole festival. It really was the first one that, from end to end, there was really something going on from one end to the other. But, you know, it was just great to know that there were so many people came, and it was, from what I, from what we spoke, the subject of police, our code, and our own security that we hired, there were no issues, there were no problems. So we're looking to continue that. This Thursday is the next edition of Alive After Five, and the weather gods have been very calm and good to me so far this year.
I agree, sorry.
Yeah, it looks like it's going to be a beautiful week this week, and Thursday is going to be, you know, the capstone to that week. And we even, I'll just let you know too, Rumba, who you know was coming to town, they are going to be using their space in front of their place. They did put an application with us to do a small, little 400-square-foot little area that they're going to serve some of their, I guess, their...
Rum-hunters.
Rum-hunters, their name is, and their is, correct.
My side of the restaurant.
So, yeah, so they're going to be adding a little extra flavor, just to welcome themselves into the community. So we're looking forward to it. Invite everybody to please come down, and of course, have a great night. Next thing I do, of course, want to talk to you, something else we're very proud of and very excited about, is that this past weekend was the initiation of a valet service program here in Hatchburg. First, I just want to say that I got, went down there at 5:00 to talk to the gentleman that was starting the program. Stood there for about a half an hour, I mean, there was not a soul in the task by that just could say, great idea, this is wonderful, we're so glad you guys are doing it, you know, kudos to you. And really, I mean, I told the guy, if you don't valet a car the whole night, I'm happy. Because that's exactly a main part of why we wanted to do this. We really wanted to show the community that we're trying to do our best to alleviate what we know can be a difficult situation of parking in Hatchburg, that we're not just sitting on our hands, that we're working on it. And, you know, thanks to the village and working with the chamber and allowing this program to happen. Of course, my prediction of parking one car was about right, because, you know, it's a new service, and I think it was less, it was about, over the weekend, it was about 10, 15 cars that actually utilized the valet service. We, and we quietly knew, we didn't publicize it too much, because we wanted to start slow and kind of build. Now we've asked all the restaurants to really put it out in there. They're, now that we know that it's going and things are out there, that we're going to, they're going to promote it on their social media pages. We're going to promote it much more, we're going to probably take an ad out, just to really push it. But we want to see that numbers increase, and people really use it. But when I was going around to the restaurants, talked to people, every patron was very positive about it. So that was step one, getting some goodwill. And step two now is to make the program successful, and use it, being user, used. And I think it will be over the next few weeks, I don't think that it'll ever grow. The next event after our Live After Five, the following Friday, is our oldest car show. It is Hatchburg's largest outdoor car show. We take it Friday the 8th.
The largest, I wonder?
I know, it's the only one, but, no. Only you call it the largest because of the cars. It's also the smallest, I imagine. So that's Friday, August the 8th, from 6:00 to 9:00. I beg the village to allow us to go to Ryder Avenue. We do have an increased number of cars, and that'll help us accommodate that, as well as an increased number of vendors that want to participate as well. So look out for that coming up on August the 8th.
What are we doing on Friday?
I have the last meeting, you guys extended us from Maple to Ryder, on the use of it. Right, right, right. Not using Ryder, and I got the letter on that, so I think we're good.
David, let's make sure, you know, get a hold of Joe Dean, and public safety. With Maple Avenue, you're going to have to have a barrier there that will allow people to go out.
Okay.
Will indicate no outlet, so people don't come down.
Absolutely, I'll reach out to you, and I'll definitely reach out to Joe tomorrow, just to make sure everybody's aware of that. Would probably be the first time that we've really extended a festival that far to Ryder Avenue. We really haven't used that area of Main Street often before. So thank you for that alert on that, and I'll definitely make the appropriate phone calls. Next, I just want to talk about, you know, I don't like to talk about the end of summer, but the St. Little Rada Festival on September 27th is now up and running. I'm very happy to announce that our Italian-American first of the year was selected as Jimmy Romeo. I think everybody knows Jimmy as a founder of this festival. Somebody who really, I think in the second or third year, took it over and had it grow to become the successful festival that it is today. So the committee, I guess, wanted to say thank you, because he had kind of stepped off as chairman last year, and this is a way to say thanks for all his efforts for many years. And we all know Jimmy also happens to be the husband of our current Village Justice, Patty Romeo, who's also very active in that as well. So that's Saturday, September 27th. Again, that's always a great time. I look forward to seeing everybody on that as well. And that's it. And unless there's anything else, any other questions?
I have a question. The Autumn Festival, what, where exactly is it? I know we voted on it, but I don't remember.
Hey, that's the traditional Maple Avenue, West Avenue.
Of course, all of my Maple.
Yes.
I'm just asking because of Pac-Man.
Sure.
Pac-Man starts, and we're going to incorporate it into all our, you know, our mailers and our advertising, so that it becomes part of the whole thing. But I just was curious, because then I won't schedule things on Terry Street if people aren't going to be able to come south easily, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, South Ocean Avenue is closed to vehicle traffic, but we're not allowed to actually stage anything on South Ocean Avenue, keep it as a...
Right, but anything that we might want scheduled, the art space or a gallery would be better scheduled, either Sunday or, but not at this time.
And certainly, I mean, right now, even though we got the approval for use of that length, you know, we're very open to manipulation, work with you as well. you know, we're very open to manipulation, work with you as well. And we'll certainly do the same to cross advertise what you're doing. I think having your festival coincide with what we're doing only enhances.
Thanks, because we'll have by then, we'll have sculptures installed and so there'll be a lot going on.
Perfect, you got it.
The recreation department's been meeting with this special events coordinator at Tri-Tech. And we're bringing them to the Autumn Festival as well.
Okay.
So it should be, should be pretty nice.
I know, Jack did.
I'm curious, how does Shuttle work from...
Thank you, reminder, Shuttle was a huge success. It was pretty much full, almost every ride, as far as we were told. We even had one car that actually, the correction officer wrote a little note, and I actually left the car on St. Joseph's overnight. Which they were fine with, St. Joseph's has been nothing but wonderful about it. I mean, if you saw the acres of parking facility that is, you know, it would take a lot to fill that lot up. So we're definitely really pushing it for this week as well. We did have an issue with Briar Cliff, I think as you're aware, that some of the business in Briar Cliff, particularly this college, where students are taking the night classes. A lot of students had trouble getting access to their classes because of the parking. So I know the owner, I think, is gonna kind of restrict the parking on Briar Cliff. So that's only more reason I want people to go to St. Joseph's. It's a real easy ride. We are gonna eliminate one spot, the stop. We did have an issue with the eastern stop, the, the stop down the eastern part of the river. We were looking to use the River Avenue Deli as a possible first spot. So the property owner didn't really love the idea. We tried to do it across the street. And that caused, like, there was a complaint from a resident who lived there, didn't like the trolley going through that parking lot. And it was logistically turning, wasn't the, the most convenient for the driver. So we're just gonna keep that ma, railroad, the eastern part of the railroad as the first stop. You know, and so it'll really only be two stops. We St. Joseph's, the railroad station, the courthouse right behind the festival and the back to the railroad station. So hopefully more people will be using it. Again, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback about it. And again, I think that just lets people know that, you know, we, we hear what the problems are, we're trying to solve them.
The, the second thing, as far as the, the, is Parabel's thing in front of the theater? Has that been discussed?
Yes, well, the way that works at Parabel and Public House, they share a stage. So this week's, it's, it's Public House's turn, so the stage is definitely off to their side. But we were just talking in the committee meeting today that we're definitely gonna, so we probably, we're thinking about maybe having the stage more central located between the two that it's always permanent and that this way, it's not in front of the theater. And then they, you know, we know where it is each week from week to week.
And it's based on, just to clarify, it's based on the fact that there's a fire zone in front of the theater. It's not that the theater complained that there's noise right here.
No, that's amazing, but I know it does leak into the lobby as well, and we have to be...
Yeah, but that wasn't the complaint, but it's just that if the theater ever had to be evacuated to the full house, they'd be coming out that front door and walking into, you know, the corral there.
And I, and I think you and Christopher, you know, at the last Live After Five, we had to do a real quick schedule change because, as people may know, we are reutilizing alleyways for Live After Five too. We're putting some light performances and music in the alleyways as a way to introduce people to the festival as soon as they get out of their car. But of course, when we're scheduling, it's the loudest band, the band we had that day, was outside the theater back door. And not thinking, gee, what impact that's gonna make. So we did reschedule, let the band only play till seven before the theater and it worked out fine. And we're much more aware of that and there will be no music going on after seven in that particular alleyway.
Do you do nine fifteen less four hundred?
Yes, nine fifteen, you know, and we, there was one vendor that we've given fair warning to that we were very, because we thought that was the quickest, that we had everybody off the street. In a half an hour's time, all but one vendor, he decided he wanted to make a few extra dollars, food vendor, and it became very difficult to get off the street and stay the extra half hour that he shouldn't have. So he's been forewarned that if it happens again, he will be asked to, you know, not to come back ever again. So other than that, we thought we were gonna go the street half an hour, which would have been record time. But I, as far as I know, there was no instance of problems. The precinct said they were very happy. Code enforcement's indicated that they were very happy. There were a couple minor, you know, a couple of things got crowded where some people might have gotten out with a cup of drink. And we've talked to those restaurants to be much more careful and wary about that. But other than that, that was, that was it. Anybody else have any other questions or concerns? Excellent, I'll see you on Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So going back to, going back to the theater a little bit, I just want to acknowledge our code enforcement officers who, and I know this is working because my phone hasn't run from Mark Siegel, that there's been quite a few matinees over there at the theater over the summer. Children's programs early in the morning. And our code guys, Al Costello in particular on the weekends, you've, you know, you've done a great job in controlling that crowd behind the theater when people are coming to park.
Yeah, well, it's not just me, those guys have done a very good job at both those entrances and those barricades held right there too.
I know, but every time I'm at the band, you're down there. So I know that somebody's keeping an eye on it and making sure that it's, it's being done right. And that, you know, seeing it myself is the first way to measure it. My second way, as I said, is I don't get a phone call from my friend Mark Siegel that there's. And I appreciate, you know, I appreciate your calls, Mark. But you guys do a great job and it's not easy, it's not easy. I've done it myself and I just want to thank you. And I'd have to say that I would guess that this is probably Gateway's most successful summer in a long time. Between Mary Poppins and, and South Pacific now. We get a huge crowds at the theater. And those huge crowds equal people eating in the village and shopping in the village and spending money here in Patchogue. And I think our parking meter complaints have gone down.
Almost none.
Are here now at Village Hall, you know, parking meter complaints have gone down. Seems that people are now used to it.
Yeah, no.
We would know, Mark. I know you know, but...
Hey, I, well, I tell a lot of, right now, if you don't know how to do it, you don't want to do it. Pull around the back, free parking right now.
Park free.
Or put, you know, so you have to put the money in or, you know.
If they can't do it, they, they can park free. So, but complaints at Village Hall are not minimal. We still get them, you know, but not as many as we used to. So everybody's kind of getting used to it. And it's bringing revenue into the village, that's going into our special fund. And Mayor and I have been talking about parking lots and parking garages and all kinds of things over the last week. So, and the theater's doing very well with Gateway and I think Mall Island's probably very happy, so. And again, August twenty second and twenty third, Ovation Dance Academy, The Wizard of Oz, don't forget. Buy those tickets, this is gonna be a wonderful show.
So says the wizard.
So says the wizard. And again, Mary Castner, who is on our architectural review board, is playing the Wicked Witch from last. And she, she's great, I gotta tell you. Was it? She's, she'll admit it, yes. But she is terrific and it's gonna be a great show, it's gonna be a fun show. It's reasonably priced and, you know, if you have children or grandchildren, come down and take a look at it. There'll be a lot of performances. Three performances.
Is it the full movie version?
It's the actual play version, which is different, there's more dance scenes, those are Dance Academy.
You dance?
Do I dance? Not in this, but I have a dance... I've been known.
So it's, so it's more like a witching?
No, it's The Wizard of Oz. It's, it's the movie, but there's more...
I played on it.
Yes. I could recite the whole thing to you, I know this.
Don't pay any attention to the baby on the...
Thank you. Once again, our friends on Hillside Avenue, Brian, you missed this one now, huh?
Which?
The block party.
Oh, yes.
That's actually...
Do they invite you anymore?
Well, I'm a lomai.
Jack, if you, if you, if you read this, this is a little bit of a different, it just came in today, I apologize, but it's only two houses.
Since you left, why?
It's on the upper side.
It's only two families that have the block party. Between North Summit and North Prospect.
It's actually only one person that wants that house. It's only two houses, the block party was first.
I gotta say that's...
That's a good word.
And just the messenger.
I think they joined in with the Highland Avenue block party.
I'd like the block party on August second from three PM to nine PM.
Oh, okay.
On Hill, at fifty-one Hillside, part of the system, one house. As I, the old lady across the street road, across the road are the block.
Okay.
This is between Prospect and Summit?
Right.
Doors are closing.
On Hillside.
Yeah, Hillside, not...
Not Highland.
Right.
Not...
Highland already had their block party.
I mean, I guess we have the loud music, they're not gonna have a band or anything.
Maybe they're gonna play with themselves.
Alcohol, I guess we should waive it, right, just to be safe.
Probably.
We're gonna close the street. Like, they want to close, like, they want to close, they would like to have the street barricade. This will, this will not, oh wait, we will do it freely. I will communicate with the residents across the road. It's gonna be...
It's like the... Oh, we can't in today.
I apologize.
It is a little bit...
Shout back out. Well, yeah. The state, they want the street barricade.
Sure.
This will, this will not prevent any local traffic from getting to their homes because they don't need to be.
They don't need to be home.
Motion?
I think we should walk up.
Bullet paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Request approval authorizing the village justice court to apply for a grant for the justice court assistance program for the maximum amount available. Say it.
Second.
Aye.
They could give us another, no?
Magna Tom.
How's that working out?
Works good.
Have we had to, like, you sparred anybody here?
I mean, you have a lot of offices here too, between us and the court offices. It's like six or seven guys there. But as far as I know, no complaints in this building?
Does cause a little bit of a backup.
That's weird.
Yes, I understand.
Does everyone have to go through?
Yeah. That process seems normal.
Yeah, see, the problem isn't only that, it's a lot of people, you get the building department, you get the court just for things other than that. And it all, and they're not letting anybody in. So you have something here, you get a building permit, it'll pick up a permit or something. At, at four o'clock, it's like three thirty, the place is like... Where does that get set up? I don't know, they do it here, they screen them down by the hall, which is...
It's a work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow board members, ladies and gentlemen. Just a couple things, we talked about the East Main Street lights that they've already brought up. And yes, it is complete just about, we just have a few more good tables and stuff. But it really does look nice. Anything that you didn't see? And, and trees and pines and really looks good and the sidewalks complete and what difference does that have? And I wanted to bring that up because we also got today, this is email here. The final design was finally submitted for a signature, for a signature for the old street project?
Yes.
Which is a DOT project. And I want to bring this up because all of these projects came to the table around the same time, probably better than six years ago. And working with DOT became so cumbersome that we just kind of gave up on them. We recruited Smitty and Marion Russo, wheeled them in and they kind of took over the East Main Street project. That's done and we're just getting that final design out for Oak Street. So at least it's gonna take another couple of months. So it, it worked out well by not sticking with DOT the whole thing. They didn't kind of, and I've been talking to a, a municipality, any director, he said they, they were still not working with DOT. Some of the, you know, grants and stuff, we're trying to work with them. We did it in-house and worked out really well, I'm pleased with that.
Joe, I want to say, Brian, I have to sign off on the, the design plan itself. We need resolution for the project for that?
Certainly can, it can't hurt to approve, approve that project by resolution, authorizing the signing.
Yeah, we'll do that. Because I could just see with something in there that said resolution based on the other day.
Some question called for the mayor to...
Execute.
Execute the agreement with DOT, the DOT payment plan.
Motion.
Second.
David?
Aye.
Thank you. We also had an interesting meeting with the PSCG of the DPW last week, checking if there's a lighting upgrade soon, what we did here at Village Hall, energy efficient lighting. They're like a thirty-two hundred dollar investment, which we've been getting back and seeing in under eighteen months. So we'll keep you posted about, about that project as well. We can talk about that close walk community, all right? The man I met with, the people who designed the crosswalks on our new village, see those new crosswalks, they look pretty neat. And in the mayor's terms, we'd like to gift wrap the village kind of with those crosswalks. In other words, put them in around the perimeter of the village. So when you enter the village, you know you're entering the village. It's just about the crosswalks, and they're working out really well, I mean, it's early yet, but they're working out well. And they certainly look nice, given the good looks, you know, so the village identifies, so we'll be almost just under those crosses.
And one of those things also, Laurie and I have talked about it, is that they can do, um, design crosswalks also. What I'd like to do, in fact, Dave Rogers from Orangeville, he talked to Laurie about the possibility of having some sort of competition to design crosswalks. What I'd like to do is design the crosswalk in front of the theater. To kind of get, to get the feeling of what the village is, where there is. Like I said, a simplistic side, a box, there's a series of boxes that I had on the night before that would have the package, that would really kind of talk about it. You have that crosswalk be that center of the building, the, the village. And we have the lighting pieces that we'll put in at the same time. So we'll light a crosswalk, there'll be design to it.
Well, we will probably work with the arts council to go out through all the multiple venues back, they call it call for artists, request for submissions and then we can see what comes in and give the artists a study.
We really talked about that a couple of years ago.
I know, yes, we probably need to make it happen. Also, they've done this before, but I still didn't see the...
I sent it to you.
You sent it again?
Yeah, I sent it again.
I just didn't see it.
They have one where they've done it in Maryland and around the country where the different communities, in Chinatown, the wardwolves have a certain local amount of Baltimore and the arts district has a certain sort of... We just sort of need to do...
We have one with the birds and it's, we can find the orders and everything, it's a great time. It was pretty neat stuff.
So I think we look at, looking at a way that all the crosswalks within the downtown really kind of market as the downtown. And I like what the, um, Tri-Tech put in. And we're going for a block, some paving and that will be included within that part to finish off the crosswalks. Because the old ones that we had, that were put in five, six, seven years ago, just about shut.
Yeah, and it, and also hopefully, I think they should hold that off, but the way they was explaining to us anyway. And they probably should say, I was gonna mention the block too, just to accelerate the paving process, you know, more roads and sidewalks.
Can I, can I just chime in a second?
If the deputy mayor, you can do whatever you want.
And I, I think when Malusi and I discussed this crosswalk at the circle, you and I discussed that, Linda?
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to remember which one, the, the...
About a traffic circle and how dangerous that is when you're so close to the traffic circle.
Yeah.
Can we look at that one, Joe? And I've seen it happen before, it's right at the traffic circle. So people are crossing there and, you know, once you get in that traffic circle, your mind is saying, "I'm going." And I've seen people, you know, trying to cross there and it's very difficult. So maybe if we're talking about crosswalks, that might be one space that we might want to consider.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was an excellent suggestion because the crosswalks are almost located in the traffic circle.
Yes. Far away...
I mean, I understand the design con, the calling from them, because we had a debate about, with the traffic engineers and Dan DeRash from the county, was the concept was to have that as a slower area and have the pedestrians in that. But the unintended consequence was the people are looking to the left for the, for the passage and then the right for the go and it is causing, I agree, a funny...
I didn't scoop you, did I?
And speaking of roads and paving, we can expect the paving of Bay Avenue starting August eleventh, weather permitting naturally. Long overdue, we hope it actually started before that, but working with the town slowed things down a little bit. However, we're looking for August eleventh for that to start. And we had been getting, you know, complaints about street lights out and stuff. And it's kind of hard, we only have a part-time electrician. So it was hard for him to keep up with that and then do all the other work that was given aside, so. But now we're just gonna keep our part-time data doing just the streetlights and we can get this contract out, some of the other stuff. So he can say doesn't need it, it's only one thing. Otherwise, you just don't, you don't catch up. You may or may not have noticed that the taxi lot has been striped. We have thirty-seven spaces, the taxi lot, you look at, I love that. The taxi lot is a lot on Terry Street.
I noticed that.
Caution, caution Burlington. We striped it, we're looking to check in the wall, but there's lighting there, which may or may not be, we'll keep checking that, maybe there's some more signs as well. And I had to tell you the truth, David, I think if the valley thing takes off, I can almost see that lot being.
That's why I thought, yeah.
It's like a perfect spot.
I thought that's why you strapped it so.
No, it's, well, the valleys are probably a little more than 37 spaces in there, you know, we went by code, we did 37 spots, and it's a very underutilized lot.
Nobody knows it's a lot they can use.
But you know, several years ago, we, nobody ever parked on Terry Street. We put the stamping for parking stalls, I think out of 18, if I remember how many. And probably the first year, there's only one guy that parked on Terry Street.
And that was you.
And that was me. Now, if you go down Terry Street, a lot of people are using it, they should, you know, so kind of like, well, you see it, you know.
When you don't see anybody there, you think you can't park there.
Right.
Just like two other lanes like that.
I was, went down Taylor Lane Friday night, it was called as Park on Taylor Lane as well, we marked out those, so the spots are there.
As long as you're running, it's not.
From Terry Street up to.
That's a great place to park in downtown.
Okay, yeah, just come right after we're about.
You can go right through the walkway, see?
It's only blocking, asking me, you feel good.
There's only a white explorer in there, huh?
There's only one white explorer, you see that there faithfully. Okay, so that's that, not much on the wish list. I am, well, actually, this is not such, you know, a good thing, I'm requesting approval for the termination of Joseph Cataro, who records in section 71 of the United States Civil Service Law. Joe is what, probably 15 years an employee, maybe better than that? Who were not injured over a year ago.
Hip replacement.
Yeah, had a hip replacement over a year ago, and you know, as it works, you have that amount of time to come back or not. And if he doesn't, well, then, you know, our hands are kind of tied, and so, you know, you have to terminate, and so I'm requesting approval for that.
Regrets, regrets about it?
Regrets, yes. Joe was a good worker, good man, his brother also works for us, and I think he'd also.
Second.
Second.
Hi, one other thing, it's a little strange, I can't really make a motion in that of staying, can I? This, I know, I know this is big, alright, but I'm gonna ask Sal to make one, and I'll explain.
Of course.
I'm done, I did that.
No, you're not.
No.
I'm not done. What do I do?
Adopted Suffolk County.
How's it move, you should play.
I handed it to you.
Sal doesn't want to make this one. Joe, is bacon have curves?
No, it's not. Not this year anymore. I'm sorry, I didn't even see this.
You want me to do this first?
No, that's a finished one, it's important, I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain that. What do we do exactly, I'm requesting approval?
To adopt the 2014 Suffolk County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation.
Okay, I apologize. Requesting approval to adopt the 2014 Suffolk County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Motion?
Second.
Any difficult questions that Joe's open and explain? Want a favor?
I guess that's all I have now.
Fit?
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, oh, now I have two things. Request approval for Joe Keese to have amplified wheels to get fire with spark on Sunday, August 10th, 12 to 8 p.m.
Hey, I was saying, let me explain, especially my son, John, my son's having, I couldn't put this on the agenda because my son is going to surprise birthday party for his wife, and she reads the agenda. So I couldn't put it on the agenda, so I'm requesting approval for him to have amplified wheels to get fire with spark on Sunday, August 10th.
So it'll be in the advance?
No.
On Newsday?
No, this will come probably after the meeting.
Yeah, we're not in the meeting until it's 4 a.m.
So I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Want a favor?
Aye.
And I'll stay. Thank you.
Just one thing real quick, I have a request for Peter Sarres to attend the New York State Codes Council 2014 Energy Code informational meeting in orbiting. And that is on August 8th, and it's at no cost to the village, so I'll make a motion.
And add to that motion also, and with the use of a village vehicle, yeah.
Okay, yeah, with the use of a village vehicle.
Second. Second.
Want a favor?
Aye.
That's it, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees, I got a couple of quick things. Requesting reimbursement for the bid for the New York Main Street Grant Project for Medi Health Medical PC 200 East Main Street for $20,000. That's a motion.
Second.
And secondly, requesting reimbursement for the bid for the New York Main Street Grant Streetscape vouchers, there's three. Biscuit Nursery for $361, Keith's Landscaping for $3,100, and custom welding for those little gates for $7,900, for a total of $11,361.
Say it.
Second.
Want a favor?
Aye.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees. Just a couple of things, I wanted to, because nobody's mentioned it, that this weekend is the Battle of the Burder. Someone wants to think it's ours, Jack, that's right. Yeah, it's this Sunday, it's this Sunday, so get on down to Shore Park, I missed it last year too, because I had a family. Yeah, I remember it was July 5th.
Yeah, it really did, it was great.
Good, good.
What time does that stop, Laurie?
You know what, I believe it's 4:00, it's 8:00. Oh, it's a later hour, it's nice, 4:00. Okay, perfect. And how do you get tickets?
Four to seven.
They sell them there?
They sell them there, or, I think you probably get them online.
How do you mail them?
I'll be with Barton.
I can help you with the Barton?
Yeah, I can do it best.
Okay, and then I have the pleasure this week to attend the matinee of Saturday. I believe I was probably the youngest one in the audience.
I know, I saw.
But there had to be at least 800, I took my 83-year-old mother-in-law, who was in town from North Carolina.
The white girl?
Yeah, she's very sweet. We had a great time, it was an unbelievably professional production, I mean, I would highly, highly recommend it. It was just amazing, it was that good, so just wanted to mention that. And then, just, this just came to my mind, and I, when John Bojack was talking about that intersection in Division River, maybe we might want to consider putting a traffic light there, because I go through that all the time, and there's always massive.
Maybe give it a little three-way stop.
Or three-way stop.
Wants to leave.
You know, no one knows when to turn, well, there's a stop sign on Division River. heading west. But kind of south, and then you've got the train tracks, so you don't want to get stuck on the train tracks, and then you're trying to turn, but this person doesn't know, so they're pulling out. It's, it's a bit of a.
If you had a main street's closed, then.
I come that way a lot, I come that way a lot, and it's usually, people seem confused, so, I mean, it might be something we'll try and look at.
It's pretty expensive. Are there, like, are there a lot of accidents there? No, but it, it's a bad accident waiting to happen, it's not a, I think there is an accident. Because what happens, across the line of River, they do it 40, by the time they hit that point, not.
What about putting a stop sign, a cam, a stop, like together?
Can't do it from a, from a intersection, can't put a stop sign, it's blocked. Has to be a intersection.
The accident, it's more follows, so where that stop sign is there, person at the corner can see them stop, but that doesn't, where do you think the guy?
Couldn't put a hax on, I don't know. I think that's too far back.
They, they had it, they take it all, that is, it really.
Well, let's think about it.
Well, let's. Get a hold of somebody, take a look at it. Do a copy, study on it, it really is.
It's bad, you know, it's a, you know, I don't know. It's bad. So. Now, we have one other thing, and yes, you're still here. The Patchogue Arts Council was working with their photography club to do some photographs of Patchogue, which we were originally going to display in all the Jays, the former Jays storefronts. But since two of the storefronts are now in the process of being leased, we only have the South storefront, so we did install the photographs, but we'll have at some point an invoice for you, Dennis. It was something that the bid offered to pay for.
Did we come to that?
Those books all pink?
No, I didn't, those windows are tinted, I believe, yes, I don't know that you could find anything in there, they're kind of dark glass. But if you look in the South former Jays storefront, you'll see the easels, and Titus Cannon did the printing, he's got professional, he's a professional photographer. And he's also the chair of the Photography Club, and it's a really nice display of photographs of Patchogue from all different points of view, and all taken by members of the Photography Club. Take a look when you're walking.
It's a lot easier, we don't have to go out.
I know, we have nothing going out, we have places to hang artwork, I mean, we just, it's getting a little tough.
Any of the pieces, though?
No, I didn't, I'm too busy. Tell it to people over the block. Anyway, that's all I have for the scene.
Trustee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees, guests. This past weekend, we took Shorefront Park back in Ryder Avenue, and Friday night, we had the kids' dance party, it was a huge crowd, it was just so much fun. Jack, ball.
All the kids danced, all right.
Yes, I was dancing.
Yes, was dancing.
I was dancing, yes, yes. And Joe, you were, you were there, right?
I was dancing, but not that of his way, I saw him dance another.
That was another, yes, not me. And the following Saturday, that was Friday night, we dedicated the Ryder Avenue Park to the great late George Wallbauer.
Wallbauer.
Why did I say George? And, right, that's, and that's where I started on zoning. It was a great ceremony, it was, we did it along with the PYA picnic.
It was great afterwards.
And we went to 380 Bay afterwards and showed off the building to some local people who hadn't seen it, it was a lot of fun. That night, we had 70's Band in the park, which was the largest crowd I had ever seen in the park, it was just fabulous, it was, it was free. And I want to thank the BID, the BID, Dennis, for being one of the, giving us donations to the Summer Concert Series. Tires Incorporated and the Village Idiot uptown contributed to the costs and.
Not me.
I just want to thank everybody for that. Moving on, the, I just have some numbers I'd like to, not to be.
Oh, Mr. Kinsley.
I know, by trustee Felice. But I, we, the numbers we're getting out of the pool in the programs this summer are just fabulous. And this, these reports are only from the end of June, but we had 227, 227 memberships at the pool, 178 family memberships, 15 single, 20 senior single, and 14 senior couple. Yeah, I don't have that, I had to ask for it. And the numbers that we're getting, the first session of swimming lessons, aerobics, we made $6,325, that was just from swimming lessons. The, the gate, you know, the cashier's booth, we made just in the three, we opened the 27th, June, and just the three days that we were open to the 30th of June. We made $1,426 cash from the booth. The Beach Club, the money gotten from the memberships, I made reference to, the Beach Club made $9,040, and that's just June. That's for the memberships. Youth programs, which are the tennis, and the camp, and yoga, the basketball, well, basketball's free, and we made $18,105. So those are some pretty nice, some pretty nice revenue.
They covered all of it, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, not the pool.
Not the pool, but just cover labor. You have all the labor.
Yeah, and so I think that's pretty impressive. I don't know, but thanks for that.
I agree with you.
I'll come back with July and just.
Give that a good scan.
Yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I have one item on my agenda, and that is the American Legion is requesting to hold a crack fair on the front grounds on September 6th, 2014. Along with their request, they are reporting to us that they have gotten somebody to pay for the cost of repairing the wheels.
Yeah, on the cannons. To rebuild the cannon, no, they can rebuild the cannons.
Oh, 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 the whole cannon.
Yeah, they got some to do the wheels, and they got some guys donating.
They're from English Wheelwright, Pennsylvania, is gonna replace the wheels.
They're doing wheels, and then they got, he's got somebody that'll redo the cannons, refer to cannons, for nothing.
Wheels are very tough shit.
Yeah, the cannons, I saw them trying to move it together, yeah.
And the less people run, do that in the English.
Yeah, that's right.
Plus that.
So this is a form of motion.
Second.
Or September 6th.
Want a favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And so I have to, I just, I thank you.
They come during, not, not American, they don't pick up.
Josephine Miller, two cents, it's in his debt, he likes those numbers, Sam, don't let him read me anything. I'm just gonna put my two cents in about the traffic on River and Division. I go to Pilates that way on Friday morning, that is scary, but it's not just that they fly down River Avenue, you can't see them coming until they're on top of you. That's not what I wanted to talk about, Laurie, we've talked about this before. You know, I was coming, I was walking up South Ocean to the bank, and you can see Gallo Chappacal, you can see the planters he has out there, it is so pretty.
They are pretty.
I, I think that, you know, we honor residents who have done some things with their homes, we should do something with the businesses, really, to encourage other businesses.
Have we done any recent work?
We used to do it, we used to, I think.
I'll talk to Joe Brandon.
The other thing to say about Guile, this past, one of the business, either the past issue, the issue before, every time somebody takes a picture of downtown, they're talking about Bachelor.
It's always, yeah.
There's always Guile, with the doors open and the flowers, and they really do present the village very well on capital levels, you know, diversity level, obviously, but also just the way they keep, they keep the front of their building.
And food.
It really looks great.
I know what you're talking about, but I don't understand, you know, the planter is a one-time expense for business owner, it's not, and you can take it off your taxes. It's not, that you have to put that money out every single year.
I had that discussion, and then I remember we brought Dennis in, if I'm not mistaken, and apparently the businesses who pay bid taxes expect that that covers any planters, and they're not all of them mindset to make that investment that we talked about.
What's it named, the Village Idiot does now?
Yeah, the Village Idiot does, they kind of walked around and took a survey, parable.
I was in Costco a couple of weeks ago, I think you probably know who it is, because I talked to people, they had these huge pots, really huge, you know, it was composite material. I bought $10, I bought one for my daughter's yard, and I thought, wow, these would be beautiful. So I said to Paul, find 10 business owners who will water, and I'll donate 10 pots. Find 10 business owners who will water, and I'll donate 10 pots. And the thing was a lot offensive, I have to make this comment, I grew up in Brooklyn, does, does the saint go down the street, and the older town young ladies?
Picked out.
Picked out?
Picked out us. Absolutely.
Josephine, this, this weekend, they did, yeah, they were, they did, they, the Festival of St. James, they got a statue that goes down the street.
But that's just, I haven't bought it.
The church needs the money, right?
Mark Siegel from Solom's, Friday night, I got a phone call from my alarm company at 12 o'clock at night, my alarm's going off. So I go down, and they said they called the police, but I get down, and the place was jammed with cars, the park line, the cops driving away, takes me 10 minutes. He honked the horn, he just drove off, so I backed the back, I called my alarm company, they said, well, they're there, I said, well, I'm in the back, well, they're in the front. I said, well, I'm in the back. Well, they're in the front. Well, by the time I get to the front, they'll be gone. So I went and did it myself. I unlocked it and put it back on. Down the alley was a telephone line, so something was broken. So I said to myself, let me drive around the front. So I drive around the front, and the place was mobbed. So I see three guys in my foyer taking the leak. I get out of the car, I say, well, it's wrong with you. You're not teenagers. You're twenty, twenty-one, twenty-five. You take it, at least... Well, they, they laughed and, you know, they're drunk. So I, I said to myself, take it out of here. They see my car, did I break my windows, and a nut, you know, but it was jammed. But I went down to the leak department, gave my, because there were no cops. And I'm sorry to say, there was no village security. I know you guys are working hard. But I called the village security, and I said, you guys aren't, don't have enough help. But I said to the cops in the police department, I said, there's no cops. I told one at the Briar Cliff, in the parking lot. The guy, the other one, drove away. He said, oh, sorry, sorry. So, you know, he was apologizing. Three of them came walking through into the police department. So I said, I want something done. If you had somebody there, then they would be careful. But a good thing to do, is a good suggestion, I think it is, like Live Five, they put up order bodies. Because every, every restaurant has a tiny bathroom. Every bar has two rooms, one for men, one for women, that one person can go in. And then also, the Colombians, they have one and one. For all those people, there's enough bathroom. So of course they have to, I said to the guys, guys, you're lucky, you get hooked by the cops. It's five hundred dollars a piece, you know.
Yeah, but if you walk into a bar, are they gonna chase you out if you have to use...
Yeah, right, right.
You just go in. It's just miscreants who just feel the heat of the urine on the street.
They seem to be busy on Friday night nights. I couldn't believe a Friday night.
I've seen it myself, Mark.
I, I, so maybe they should just, you know, maybe put some, each restaurant should put two outside their place. I don't know if they can do it, but someplace. Because it's gonna happen again. And what we're gonna do, we'll redo our store, we're putting one of those central lights. Maybe, you know, maybe they'll say, hey, I can see what I'm doing. But where the central light is.
And video.
I'm tired of cleaning up.
You should see how much the village takes in for public urination. It's...
I know, I, I, I know.
And I'm always saying, why is that? I'm always saying lighting is critical.
Yeah.
If you keep the lights on, you know, rats go to the dark.
Right, right.
That's a good idea, if every store owner had their...
Well, we have it in the back.
I keep the lights on at night office for that reason.
Yeah.
Between Copper Beach and the churchyard.
Right.
And Union City Bank, and I will, yeah, it's dark in that case.
Yeah.
I keep my lights on late at night so that people can see parking lot, but also if anything's going on, anybody driving will see it.
Well, the back of our little parking lot there, we can put these special lights in. Well, I guess it's dark. They go on, and they're like daylight. So, like I said, still, the parking lot there is dark at night.
Is it dark, Joe? I mean, we've, we've checked the lights out.
It is hot going if that happens in Main Street though.
Yeah, and it's right there. But, and then, but the place was hopping, you know, hopping. Every, every bar was, people were falling out of it. Unbelievable. Okay.
How's Dad feeling?
Oh, he's feeling good, feeling good, yeah, yeah, thank you.
How's his knee doing?
Uh, he's fine. Went to doctor today. He's feeling good. Getting better.
Do you hear the cops approach you?
Yes. All good. I concede. Thank you. Yo, Marty, from Fifty Seven Pine Mall Bar. I was here about a month ago, just looking to find out about any bamboo ordinances going on.
Was that a name?
Bamboo ordinances.
We were talking about that before we came in today. You know, what were difficult then? Is it your name in the passage? Is that...
Yeah, it's actually, I found out, the person I bought the house from actually put the barrier in the ground, and it still managed to get its way through. And I pulled out two sections, probably about four or five feet long. Thought I had it, all of a sudden, last week I see another three-foot chute coming up. When it pops up, it's too late. So, I mean, Old Town is about once, and just did something, and Brookhaven's got it.
Put something together, right?
Yeah, we evaluated the codes in, you know, Brookhaven towns, and we looked at them. I think closer look, it just, it's difficult on, on, well, Babylon town's particularly aggressive in that their passes, you have, the person is required to remove.
That's what I was...
Well, they have such a big, if they want to keep it, it's gotta be plastic, metal straps around it to keep intact. I said, this is gonna be a bongo issue for years, my place. And I just walked in, the best thing I want to do is do it anyway.
The interesting point, your question was gonna be, because it's been there for so long, you know, I can usually see a defense of what's the original source.
Oh, you can see it. My, they're actually, I talked to somebody in the local town, I have to personally, that's better here. They actually filed, they sent to me some means to remove it. The only people that have moved it, it's Stevens and Core, it's a clinic. The only people moving anything was they, I'm the young, I heard that they had a tarp, you know, just pull out, I put that in my area. Like I said, straight up, one, I chased back into my grass, which is heading, just off to Sash Pool, do my sprinkler system. And we're talking, if this gets to all this, it's thousands and thousands of dollars. I don't have to spend it. You know, if you like privacy, that's great. I don't have an issue with it. It's just contained.
Can you kill it, like with chemical?
No, Josephine spoke about that, about the last time she brought up.
I don't know if it could be done. It's, it's the grass.
It comes right up through the grass. It has a point, and it comes right through the plastic.
It'll break through everything. It's...
Can go through asphalt, sort of.
I don't want to see that next. But I know they, they said they had to be ended this month, and nothing's been accomplished yet. So I was just wanting to follow up, see if anything was going on.
I'm glad you did, because we bet down silver.
Yes.
Do you have any evidence? Is it the same thing?
It's just been gone for ten years. Point, I don't know. It's, it's going through the beast. From the middle yard. I mean, excavator, I guess, will go down. Or... Be complete. Yeah, that's what I can tell.
Well, I can have a...
Have a holder penny balls.
Yeah. Have a board, and then we'll set up a look here.
Yeah, let's take a look at it. I don't know how the ordinance controls it.
Yeah, well, complete the responsibility on property owner. They can take it out if anything. Complete.
Yes, but, you know, generally, you want to have the village go enforce, and that's the problem with most of these codes. If they put it on the joint neighbor responsibility, if the village doesn't normally enforce that, that's a neighbor-neighbor dispute. It's a neighbor-neighbor enforcement question. Where does the village inject itself on the enforcement question? You know, so like Babylon, where you take an aggressive stance, and which is very aggressive, and requiring the property owner to remove it. You have to prove that's the source of it, you know, that's coming from that property.
Just saying, my yard is, stalks coming up to three, four-inch diameter. I told him, because we built furniture out of some of the stalks. Been hanging around there for a few years now.
Trated forages.
Oh, yeah, two inches, I don't know, like this. It's crazy.
Now, the guy who's the bamboo on his property, what's his, what's he say to you?
Nothing.
Like...
And I've done it a little once, can answer both cars in the driveway. Mom home, no, dad home, no. Okay.
So he's not pulling his hair out, like worried about the bamboo?
Apparently he wipes it, which is great. I got a little black mulch, it's all the bamboo leaves now, it's...
How, how big is the, what's it gonna buy? How big is it, is that big? Is it like...
It's, let's see, probably about, let's grab it back there, six, fifty, sixty feet?
Yeah, something like that.
And probably about four feet deep.
Yeah, probably about the length of this...
Ah, more than that.
Yeah.
It goes from, I have my, I have my... It's about forty feet long, thirty, forty feet that goes, and it just, you see it just starting to spread all over to the corner.
Does it go into the front of your house? Yeah.
I'm just dealing with it on the side, just the back.
Probably the back door, your side door.
From the side door, all the way to that corner houses, from their fence, almost two with the garage, the garages. You start seeing, start seeing more shoots up out of garage on the other side of the fence.
So the walk side of your backyard?
Yes.
Yeah.
On the, I guess, the west side of your...
Yeah.
You know, it sounds great in the wind and all that stuff, but... Putting in flower pots, that's great.
Do you have any of these children's pet dummies? They're gonna pet.
They cost ninety bucks a year.
I'll leave them to the old one.
I can look at this, and, you know, the next word we need is, I can present kind of a general idea of what we have, and sort of whole urine floor, I can meet you after that.
Is it enforceable?
That's what I have to, that's the concern, you know, or issues of liability. There are property owners who like it. There are property owners who plant on purpose. There are irresponsible property owners who plant this, and then it becomes...
Does this go back to this guy's house also? Does he have to save up?
Oh, sure.
But he may have this area.
It's furniture, and yards.
Have he planted?
Yes.
So he planted himself?
Yeah, they like it for privacy issues. That's great, you know.
By the way, it's a fabulous green. It's four-season, okay, but it's very invasive.
It loves water.
It loves water. If you can find water, it's gonna follow it. It goes into, it'll go into your separate system.
That's like a spear. It breaks into there, done.
Your, your lawn sprinklers, any source of water, it's gonna go after it. It's gonna, it grows. You can almost see it so fast in the growth streaks, but in the winter, it's just, you know, gray screen. I almost planted them. Then my wife wrecks it for us.
I tell you, they're huge.
It can stand up sixteen inches in one day. I'm not kidding.
I cut down the twelve-foot stalk to my yard. Paul, you haven't seen it before, right?
Yeah, I've heard.
I'm gonna take a look, take a look over here one minute. You know, sprinkles go on, and also, it's just, you know, it'll kill everything that's there.
Very healthy to sprinkle those.
Oh, I know, it's, it's, it's a non...
It's a jungle.
Sounds terrific. I don't want it on the side. I don't, I don't like them for it, so...
If I, this board we have, it's...
Yeah, I'll take a look.
All right. Can I just go into the office, find out?
You know what you should probably do is call, follow up with the building department. They gave thirty days tomorrow, let them know, because still others been done.
Yeah, I should try them next week, because I'm on vacation, so...
And, and, you know, I'm not making any promises. I'll do my best to try to find something that I think is enforceable and solves the problem. Because a lot of the ordinances that we looked at, and we looked at in the last couple of weeks, are just, you know, thou shalt knock to a certain extent, but have no teeth. And we want something that's gonna be enforceable.
Oh, Avalon's footprints.
Yeah.
See, that's one pretty stiff over there. But, you know, I don't wanna be that, you know, pesky neighbor and all that stuff, but... Yeah, I'm getting people to trim the branches that hang on the side of those.
I'll take care of it.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Done?
Evening. Mr. Mayor, Dr. Marksman, Sixty Palmer Street. I'm usually up here talking about the garbage and beautification things and get ideas. Yeah, I have a few suggestions. Unlike the other ones I talked about to an egg-ing extent, I'm gonna say this once, and, but, you see, I doubt that. I think Brookhaven Town has a large, with a crane on it, in Petro River, by Sandspire. It's been there for months. It's not too pretty.
Kind of is, they're pretty here.
As much as possible, that maybe they could pump it by the Heside, or some other place.
Today.
Are you serious?
I sat at the war at lunch and watched the crane go up the river.
Okay.
I may not be the same crane, but a crane went up the river, Raymond? It was a huge crane. Huge crane.
You know, you should, oh, they're, they're gonna call Tony, he sits over there, take care of it.
As some of you know, I patrol streets every day, pick up the garbage.
Sunday mornings?
Every morning, seven days a week.
But it's best to Sundays.
Well, I've been going on other areas too. I'm dividing my time around the...
It goes on Elkhorn there, I'll send that.
I go down Ryder, the South Ocean. I go to Embodies, the parking lot, the pool parking lot. It'd be nicer for Embodies to put a garbage pail by their parking attendants. I'm always picking up the parking tickets. They stuff them in the bushes, and, I mean, give them a garbage pail and empty it. The firemen's practice, or the spaniel, where they use to practice down by Ballfields, haven't used it in years. There's an old rusted fifty-five gallon drum sitting on the top. Maybe the fire department could borrow a ladder from somebody, go get it down. And there's a piece that can't do it, swinging in the breeze. I'm not saying take the whole thing down, do something to beautify it.
Joe, are they supposed to do something?
Yeah, they were. We, we just, we would have gone back and put the fire department for a few years. And they were supposed to, in fact, two months ago, they promised me that they were gonna be working on that and, you know, get it saved and beautified.
It was a, a cold chief.
Yeah.
Just some, they're gonna get the cable off it, and they gotta disconnect that here, then hang in the wire and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Whatever parade they're at, the last parade they're at, they told me they were gonna take care of it.
Saddles, nothing, all still, still, chamber that one?
No, it's fine.
No, it's fine. That's two months ago. Apple.
And part of my morning route is the railroad station. I think the village maintains the parking lots. It would be nice to re-whack the area along the platform. I mean, it's this tall, and people, it's a railroad station, but a platform between the parking lot and the platform. Either one of the parking meter vending machines, it's this narrow there because it's all overgrown, and people feel very comfortable throwing their garbage into the weeds. So if you mow that down, it would be nice. And then the last thing is, I have nothing to say, just have a couple of pictures. And pictures worth a thousand words, it says it all. So those are suggestions, and what if it's worth? I'm in...
What time do you go to work, Don?
Parking?
What time do you go to work anymore?
I'm there by six, I mean, eight. I'm out on the road at six.
So you do this whole thing every morning before you go to work?
Well, I have three different areas to go. Yes, about two and a half miles, I do. With thousands of tow truck trucks just picking up the garbage.
Is the bank in that house next to you?
Oh, yeah.
But I have windows?
Oh, no, they, they do the roof, they do the roof, the garage, and...
In fact, they're working on the porch.
Good, okay. I took a major push in the building department. I didn't get a follow-up from them today. It was on my list, and I didn't get down to see them. I saw them for something else, but I didn't get them for that.
They're taking a long time, but it's, it's getting done.
Okay.
Doing a nice job on the roofs.
Good.
I'm assuming they'll do the window.
Yeah. There was a thing that sent them there, so, yeah, I hope so.
Well, I sent some pictures with the, of the garage. I mean, it was filled with rodents and things in there.
Yeah.
You notice the railroad station tree is back up?
Yes.
I don't know how that fell over. Like, someone had to do something.
No, it got upward because it got, rain fell on it so much.
And the wind, it was very windy.
It's also irrigated there, which is why it didn't die. Because it took Jogi and Betsy to get back.
Yeah, enough.
But it's back up.
And staked.
I don't know, maybe it's been staked, I couldn't tell.
It was, it was staked originally.
I think it was staked.
Yeah, but they took the stakes off it for a period of time. Everybody thought it was in the ground solidly, and that, that rain and the wind that we had a couple of weeks ago took it over.
Donovan sent me a message, my Karen sent me a message.
All was at my house, and it was, it was a red alert about that. We had a little vacuuming part of the village.
Well, so street side, it's pretty, it's pretty ugly. And we have the science factory, so it might be a simple matter. Thank you. Thanks, Ron.
So, Jack, we're next this week. So before we all go on the vacation, last series of questions. So, what happened to FEMA, the person from Mascot Dock?
We were a contact again with a new person doing it. And what Andy told me last week, there were two more documents that they were, that they're in, between FEMA and New York Rides, the most incompetent bunch of people you ever want, just amazing. Supposing that they, they proved everything, we're supposed to be getting a blue book. When it shows up, and then it shows up.
Ah, the blue book in the area?
The blue book is, is the key to the whole thing, the blue book. The blue book is, is the key to the whole thing, the blue book.
And you can do anything without it?
No, you can't do it, you can do whatever you want, but if what you do is in the blue book, they don't only give you a real take on it.
How much money does the village expect to make?
A million, it's a million two, is what we asked for the first one.
That's what you asked for the first one, okay, so that's my question. Uh, Pardi, the next series of metering, when is that gonna take place?
Well, we just met with the Chamber of Commerce last week, and got their recommendations, and we're gonna put together the plan.
So, so about four months?
Hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll have the decision.
For the fall. And you haven't mentioned metering amounts lately, not, but in the game through, through the parking meters, do you...
I haven't heard anything from Andy in, in a while. They'll have to get, get our report.
Okay.
It's good, it's really good.
Because you, okay.
Well, I'll give you a round number, for the first six months, it was about seventy-two thousand dollars.
The first six months?
Yeah, and the first six months, I knew we'd get them in February. We just, they, we had meters, we wanted...
I remember, right, so when the next set of meters comes in, that's the whole, that's all the meters that are gonna be, that's it, right, that's the whole grid, alright.
Yeah, there's eleven more meters to put in.
Okay, that's it, was left just eleven meters?
Because, you know, what you don't want to do is, because the meters are gonna be in the back, and those are spaces that a lot of the retail use, for their, their retail customers during the day, so you really gotta be cognizant of the fact, and make sure we take care of them, that we don't hurt the retail side. So I think that they're talking now about the hours of the movement of the industry, so... It's a very complicated situation, because you've got employee parking, you've got people coming, you know, shopping, uh... Music lessons. You've got people coming for music lessons to the, you wanna make sure that people are not inconvenienced to a high degree. You know, I could say, you know, as much as people don't like the parking meters on Main Street, nobody's inconvenienced by it, it's just that you have to play a meter. But in the parking lots, you know, at the library, for instance, has a fence there.
They have volunteers.
And they have volunteers, volunteers coming, you wanna make sure they have parking. And frankly, yeah, and the theater has volunteers, and frankly, each, it's very interesting how each little quad in the village has their own specific needs. This one wants parking, you know, wants meters to start at ten, this one wants to start at five, and this, so you try to work, and Dave has been very helpful in that, and we're just trying to figure out how to put those in. It's not gonna be as robust as the original plan, which was almost parking meter in the entire lots, but it's gonna be pretty, you know, built, we're making money, and it's going to the fund, and we're paying for our officers to, you know...
And that, that fund also includes pilot payments? The park, the parking, does it also include pilot payments, that like, say, run down the phase?
Yes, yes.
Build various restaurants at times.
Yep, yeah.
Alright, and my last and final question is to you, President Polis, a couple months ago, perhaps you initially, you had just talked about coding force along with submitting visual inspections, whatever happened to that initiative?
Uh, they're still doing that, uh, he's out there, he's, he's, what's his name, Steve, is it Steve's name? Anyway, he's out there, and he's, um, he's going through each neighborhood, he's, he's checking on different houses and different things, and making suggestions if they see something that they don't like, or something that should be done or could be done. So, uh, they are out there, and they are, they are going neighborhood to neighborhood, checking on certain things.
Okay, so that's in the process?
Yes, yes, it's in the process.
Have a good vacation.
Okay.
Any other comments, public?